Welcome to this week's episode of Bring It On. I'm Bob Hayes and I'm going to be the show host for this week's episode. As we've been doing, we've been focusing on candidates this year that are running for different boards in the towns of Whitman and Hanson. And thank God, we have a lot of people that want to run for these volunteer boards because, ladies and gentlemen, as you know, this is a no-pay job and lots of times it's a thankless job. So I want to thank every candidate that's come in, no matter what office you're running for or what you're doing. But today, I have incumbent for the Board of Selectmen, Justin Evans. Justin?
Hey, Bob. Good to see you again.
Good to be, good to be here with you and thanks for coming in. Justin, give us a little background about the candidate, Justin Evans, family, town. I know that you're in the incumbent here. I think honestly, I read, I think it was in the Whitman-Hanson Express, that you're the only incumbent out of a ton of, ton of people that have run for years.
Yeah, I am, so this year between Whitman and Hanson, I think there are 12 candidates running for four seats on the select boards, boards of selectmen in both towns, and I'm the only incumbent of those 12 candidates, which is crazy if you follow the town for a long time because I think in Whitman, the last time there wasn't an incumbent was, it was probably seven years ago. It's been a long time.
I was getting ready to say you could be one of the youngest running, but in Hanson, they have a gentleman who's 22 years old that's running. He's a newcomer and God bless him to jump right into this.
Yeah.
This spot. So anyway, back to you, Justin. Tell us a little bit about your family and the Whitman connection and...
Yeah, so I grew up in Whitman. My parents bought a house here when I was in the second grade. We moved here from Abington. And I grew up in the school system, went to the Holt School for a couple of years before that closed and they moved me to Duval. You know, Whitman Middle, Whitman-Hanson Regional High School. I went to the Old School for a year before that closed and they opened the New School that is still, I still call the New School, but it's now...
16 years old.
16 years old, so yeah, graduated in 2008 and went to study mechanical engineering at Northeastern University. I've worked in energy since then and went back and got my masters in energy systems. And then I married a girl from Hanson. We moved back here in 2017, got married at Camp Kawani and bought a house in 2018. And we're actually expecting our first child at the end of May.
Oh, congratulations. I'm glad to hear that. So we're going to have another Evans going through the school system, hopefully.
Yeah, class of 2040, which is a really scary thing to think about.
Don't even go there with me. No, that's a great thing. That's awesome. Local flavor, marry a Hanson girl, you know, live in Whitman, the Whitman-Hanson connection, you know?
Yeah, it was, it's a really special place to grow up. It's why we wanted to come back here and start our family.
Amazing. So you've done three years on the Board of Selectmen. Give us a little recap of the three years of what some of the biggest accomplishments that you think you have had an impact on. And you know, I know there's a ton of things that goes on in three years is a long time, but see if you could hit on some of them.
Yeah, it's been a very busy three years. So when I got elected in 2019, we were looking at a couple of things, a lot of long-term planning. We saw succession planning in the immediate future because we were looking at the retirements of the town administrator, police chief and fire chief all coming right up. And those were the predicted things we were going through. Some of the unexpected things that came up after that are obviously COVID-19, navigating through that with the town of Whitman. And we had a couple of, you know, we renegotiated the regional school district agreement for the first time since before 93 had reform, I think it was 92 was the original agreement. I was appointed to be the selectman representative from Whitman on that regional school agreement committee. We bargained out changing the funding, the assessment formula to both towns, reached a compromise. Both towns agreed overwhelmingly at an outdoor town meeting because we were then in COVID. That's probably one of the things I'm most proud of is taking that situation where it looked very much like we were going to go to a, begin the fall without a budget certified between the two towns, but we found that that middle ground compromised and we were able to get both towns to agree to amend the regional agreement. And here we are, still working under the amendments. And then, yeah, a couple of the other big things. So long-term planning was a huge goal of mine. We've since, you know, we completed a budget override evaluation committee to do some long-term budget planning. We recently finished a strategic plan for the town of Whitman that pulled in things that I'd done on the finance committee even before, some capital planning. We did a, the UMass Boston Collins Center did a sort of salary assessment for where everyone's at in town. And finally bringing that in now, we can start making some, I would say corrections for longtime employees so you don't just, you don't just meet those salary needs when you hire new employees. And yeah, the strategic plan pulled all of those things together, a town survey that we did of all the residents to ask, you know, what do you like? What would you like to see improved? You know, what would you be willing to fund an override? Would you not? And just getting all of that groundwork laid out, I think is a huge asset going forward, especially because those retirements we were expecting came and we now have a new town administrator, a new police chief, new fire chief, new deputy chiefs. We're looking to replace the position that was the assistant town administrator will now be an HR director, grants and procurement specialist. So it's been a, it's been a very busy couple of years in Whitman and that is without even considering the pandemic where we were thrown virtually, tossed out into the wild and really just trying to work through the whole thing with everybody else.
As you know, we, you talked about pandemic and what went on and a lot of people were at wit's end with the pandemic and meetings being held virtually and not knowing, the unknown is obviously the toughest part of having to navigate through anything, whether it's funding politically or how people would vote at a town meeting or how, as you said, Whitman and Hanson both had town meetings outside at the school district and they were two of the biggest town meetings unless some real huge, big things came up that the towns of Whit, we had numbers, if I remember correctly.
I think Whitman had over 400 people, maybe 350 and Hanson even more than that. Turning out to town meetings when, I mean, you know, well as anybody, it's usually where we're struggling to get that 150-person quorum for a special. So it was a, it was a big change at an outdoor town meeting in July at the high school in 90-degree weather, just reacting to some of the things that were coming at us.
Yeah, stuff that gets thrown out. In fact, I remember, I think, and I correct me if I'm wrong, I think at one meeting Frank Lineham said, "Anyone who comes from now forward gets a free pizza at the Venus Cafe."
Something like that, yeah.
Something like that. I mean, thinking out of the box stuff and I know Frank was just shooting from his hip, but it shows you how tough it is to get people, 150 people who are meeting. And I think Whitman's got 8,500 or 9,000 voters.
We've got about 10,000 registered voters.
10,000 registered voters and you can't get 150.
Can't get 150. Yeah, actually, there's an article, I mean, to get into the weeds, on the draft warrant right now, there is an article that the selectmen are proposing to reduce the quorum for a special town meeting to 100 instead of 150, just because it's getting to the point where we can't, you know, this spring, we weren't able to, to have town meeting certify contracts with the police department, purchase safety equipment that we needed to, needed a special town meeting to appropriate the money for. So it's one of those things where it's starting to get into the operations of things and we just need, our annual town meeting quorum is only 50 people. I think double that is enough for a special. And without getting in the way of basic operations of government, we need to be able to move forward.
Exactly. Because government, as you know, everybody can bring any type of a warrant article or anything up, but it's voted by the people. The selectmen are the guiding board to guide the town along, but ultimately the spending pot is voted by the people of the town. And now we're talking about spending pot now that we get kind of into that. During COVID, it was very difficult and towns were spending and they were getting reimbursed from the federal government, the state government, different things that were being done, pieces of equipment bought or, how do you navigate through that type of stuff? It's coming at you and it's coming at you full blast.
It was crazy and luckily, you know, it happened, we had really three town administrators during that period, so there was, it was a difficult transition during CARES Act sort of navigating. Obviously Frank Lineham was the town administrator when we were beginning the process, but he'd already announced he was planning on retiring. We had Lisa Green as our interim town administrator through the middle and then we hired Lincoln Heinemann in February of 2021. And he saw us through the rest of the CARES period and now into the ARPA period, more federal funds, different programs, slightly different priorities. But it's one of those things where you just have to look at how that system is structured. And if you take like for CARES, we knew that there was a deadline and there was a pool of money that the county had and we could submit reimbursement for it. And the town of Whitman had a, had an allocation that we were told, you know, this is what we've set aside for you. But if other towns didn't meet their allocations, Plymouth County still had to spend it by the deadline. So we, I think wisely overshot a little bit, just to say, if other towns don't spend up to their cap, we have these allowable uses. We were still running vaccine clinics, still distributing tests, paying overtime for people who are out sick or whatever it was for running these clinics for that kind of stuff. And so by overshooting that, we, I don't think the county has decided yet, but I think there's a very good chance we will get additional CARES money based on spending that we did within the allowable period.
Just so the viewers will get it, because we talk about these things, I mean, it's no secret that I was on the school committee for a long time.
We're both in the weeds here. We probably should take it back a little.
Right, we talk about it, but the CARES Act, can you explain what that is? Is it in any English language that they'll understand? It's part of the COVID reimbursement or?
Yeah, so the federal government passed a COVID relief bill early on. I think we all got checks from the government, stimulus checks during that period, but it was, it was part of another package that also sent money to state and local governments. And Plymouth County was one of the, the only county in Massachusetts at the time and it was pretty unique, the only, you know, entity other than the city of Boston that chose to take its distribution directly and then set up its own system to redistribute those funds. And so while most towns around the Commonwealth were submitting those allowable reimbursements to the state, Whitman, being part of Plymouth County, was, was spending, you know, on COVID relief type stuff, but sending that to the county. And Plymouth County had a much lower administrative cost because they just took everything internally and they said, "The way that we maximize this is to get as much money out to the towns as possible." So I know the city of Brockton, I believe, this is to brag about Plymouth County, but the city of Brockton, I believe was only received, the only city in Massachusetts to receive more aid than Brockton was Boston. And Brockton's not the second biggest city in the state. So it was one of those, just by the way that the county managed this program, that completely maximized aid out to the communities. And it was, it was a huge help for us to get through this, this whole pandemic. And they've decided to do the same thing for ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, which is another federal stimulus program, slightly different rules, it extends for a longer period of time, but it's the same general idea that this is, this is economic stimulus to get us out of the pandemic and it's additional spending that we may need as a result of it.
Well, that's, that's all good stuff. You talked about having three different town administrators and as you navigated forward through COVID, it had to be, have its challenges and its difficulties because all of the members were working remotely. You talked about, I believe it was the Collins Center?
Yeah, so we did a lot of studies over the last, even five years, even back to my time on the finance committee. And the UMass Boston Collins Center, actually did two of those studies. So one was a, a long-term capital plan. I think they did a five-year capital plan for the town of Whitman, talking to department heads. This is what it would take for us to fund all of our capital needs over the next couple of years. It's kind of had a wrench thrown in it because of COVID, because some of the CARES spending to make us work remotely, have virtual meetings, a lot of that was technology needs in our capital plan. So we're going to have to edit that, but, but that was a huge help from them as sort of just a long-term planning thing. We also took a look at, at salaries within town and the way the Collins Center broke that down was sort of in tiers. So you've got your, your top-level administrator salaries, your chiefs and your town administrator. You've got your other major department heads, not to put down any other department, but you know, running the DPW or the treasurer collector, those kinds of things that are, you know, big department heads. And then you've got your other levels of, just to make sure that everyone's on a level playing ground. And that's something that we've been revisiting recently and people at town meeting this year will probably notice some salary adjustments to, to get long-term, longtime employees more in line with where they should be, where their peers are, whether it's other towns or within this town. Because we've been in a bad habit previously of, there were two bad habits previously. One was rolling over the salary of the outgoing chiefs, administrators into the new position and the other was only paying a role what the market rate is when you hire someone new. And so you really don't want to be punishing your, your long-term employees, they're taking the hometown discount and it's just not right. So in a year like, like this, you know, in looking at fiscal '23, the town of Whitman's actually in a pretty good spot. We can, we can fund all of our operating budget needs, including the school's assessment right now, without any one-time funds. And that's the first time that I can say that as a member of the Board of Selectmen or the finance committee.
Very good. It seems like it was, you're stating then it was a good team effort with all of the five people that are on the board here in Whitman to get this done.
It was and everyone was really involved in this process. And when we were, when we had this opportunity to hire a new town administrator with Frank Lineham retiring, one of the things that we looked for was a financial, a strong financial acumen because we knew that this was going to be the challenge, was getting all of this stuff sorted out, absent COVID confusing everything else, that we were putting a lot of effort into financial planning, strategic planning, capital planning, and knowing that this is what we want to focus on for the next couple of years, is just getting ourselves in a good spot so that we can be self-sustaining.
Talking about sustaining, when you mentioned that, as you know, people, the five-year plan, it has to be, I'm asking a question, I guess, it has to be something that you see sustainable. And part of the problem that has been brought up or asked about five-year plans is, we can set all the five-year plans we want, what if town meeting doesn't fund it? What do you do? What's plan B or how did you edit it, as you would say, to try and move and groove? Because it's going to be a little bit of a dance, no matter what you do. I mean, COVID threw a curveball into every town's funding and what went on and how we ran towns. And Whitman seems like they made it through pretty good. No one came away unscathed.
No one came away unscathed. Yeah, I think I spoke to the clerk's office on what death certificate statistics were for, through the pandemic. I think it was 27 Whitman residents passed due to COVID-19.
Because of COVID?
Because of COVID-19, that listed on their death certificate as the, as the cause. And so nobody got away unscathed, but I do think Whitman was able to navigate it pretty well. And we are coming out a stronger, more prepared community. We know what we're getting into and we did that amid a lot of turnover. It's not just the positions I identified. I mean, we've replaced the director of the council on aging. Just before I started, we hired a new town accountant. So it's, there's a gray wave in municipal government and it's given us some opportunity to rethink some positions as our building inspector retires now. We're looking at hiring a full-time building inspector and spinning out what were once his facilities duties into its own facilities director role. And we're only able to do that because we're in a strong financial position this year. It's something that we identified, we brought a consultant in, a financial consultant a couple of years ago and identified that as one of the weaknesses in the town, is that we're only repairing facilities when things break. And if you're proactive, it's a lot cheaper if you replace a boiler when it gets near end of life rather than waiting for it to break and calling someone up and saying, "How soon can you fix this? We need the heat."
So you're a big advocate of preventative maintenance?
Absolutely.
Getting ahead of the curve, would you say? Is that something in your forte? I mean, you have a masters?
Yeah, but masters, it's, it's energy systems engineering that I study. So it's, it's kind of a niche subject, but it's, it's one of those things where looking at whether it's, you know, utilities or transitioning that to the town, it's preventative maintenance saves a lot of money in the long run.
Because you're not doing it in an emergency situation. It's like calling somebody at 3:00 in the morning costs more than 8:00 in the morning.
Exactly. When I was a kid, our furnace died on Christmas Day and it's just like, it's a very expensive repair, calling someone up on Christmas morning.
Has to be done, but you're going to pay. So you're, what else would you tell the voters that you think should be done in Whitman moving forward? I mean, you, it sounds like you've spent an exciting three years and a challenging three years through COVID and everybody was challenged. Moving to the future, what would you like to see Whitman do to get even better than you're already stating it is?
So I'm looking at a couple of things. So one of the things that I, the town really wasn't able to accomplish because of the pandemic was, you know, we joined the Community Preservation Act. Hanson's been a member for a long time, but we want to start funding those projects. We've built the committee. We're ready to go on those, but it's time to just start getting things rolling with that. It's a separate source of funding. The state matches, this year it was 40% of the revenue taken in through that. It's something that, looking forward, it'll be really nice to start offsetting some of the town's costs with what is state matching funds. We're looking at municipal vulnerability preparedness, something else that the town recently joined, but we haven't been able to start applying for grants through that program because we still have a vacant assistant town administrators office because we haven't had the, you know, we've been focused on other things and the town administrator's been able to handle the additional load along with the executive administrative assistant in that office, but it's really a three-person office. And the things that we're, we're putting off because of that is some of these grant applications, getting more state money into the town. You know, sort of on the immediate horizon, even, you know, before the election, the town is considering repealing the prohibition on recreational and medical marijuana facilities in town. And we're looking at that because, you know, a lot of the towns around us have authorized that and they're taking in a lot of revenue. You know, Brockton, Abington, Rockland all have recreational facilities. Hanson has a manufacturing grow facility and is pursuing also changing the bylaw at the same time to allow recreational sales.
Where do you sit with that?
I think it's a good idea. I think, you know, in 2017 and 2018, the town chose, well, because in 2016, the town as a whole voted in favor of legalizing marijuana, we were on track, had we done nothing, to just have recreational marijuana establishments authorized in the town of Whitman. That was the way that it was structured. If a town voted in favor, by default, it was going to have to set up a licensing system and people could start pursuing that. So in 2017 and 2018, the town thought, at a couple of special town meetings, maybe we don't want it in town, let's take a pause, prohibit the sale and see how it goes elsewhere. And now we've seen, you know, I talked to a selectman in Abington who said, "There's, there's been no crime increase. Their police chief is fully on board. They've been able to fund a lot of awesome projects with this." I know Rockland purchased, I believe, two police cruisers last year with the, what they call community impact funds. So they set aside a separate account just for this, not like an excise tax, but it's a, there's an excise tax that goes to the state and there's a community impact fund that can go to the town and the state also sends some excise tax back to, back to the town. But some of that revenue could help, you know, a couple of years ago, we were looking at a, at an override. I don't think we are right now, but, but a way to help keep that off a little longer would be some creative revenue opportunities like following what our neighboring communities are doing and allowing recreational marijuana establishments in Whitman.
Good, great. Green energy.
Oh, yeah.
Talk about it.
Now you're speaking my language.
Well, I'm asking where you sit. These people want to know how you sit and I think you've done a good job of explaining how the town is situated and how they've done as a team and how you've done as part of that team. Talk a little bit about green energy. I know that you're a green energy guy.
Yeah.
I believe, anyway.
Yeah, I actually have solar panels and a battery in my house right now. So my, my house is completely self-sustaining, but I'm looking at, so one of the things we could do with municipal vulnerability preparedness, it's a mouthful, grants is start looking at some sort of energy, either, something I'd like to look at is making the sewer pump stations more sustainable. So right now, if we have a long-term power outage, we have to be hauling generators around all over town. I think that grant could be used for energy resilience to put battery backup on some of our sewer pump stations. So even if those can run for six, eight, 12 hours without having the DPW hauling generators between pump stations, going to one, then going to the next, then going back, it would save a ton of time and effort and one of the biggest headaches for the town when the power goes out, just to make sure that all of our, all of our sewage continues going to the treatment plant in Brockton. So that's a little off, but it's, it's some of that energy resilience stuff we'd like to look at and it's something I think is allowable within the grant. The town's also pursuing two major building projects right now, a new middle school. There's a middle school building committee and a potential new DPW building, something that is long overdue, if you've ever seen our DPW building. Along with those, there's a lot of state funding right now to design net zero buildings. And so if we were to build the DPW building with a large, south-facing roof and load it up with solar panels to offset all of the energy that it uses and then some, because we're, as the town, we're one customer, we could offset all of town halls' energy usage or the police station. Getting a big solar, basically a farm on top of the roof of a garage, it could save the town a ton of money. And if the state is incentivizing the, some of that capital cost upfront, we can do it for cheap. So it's just, it's a no-brainer to do some of this stuff when we have the ability. I think the, you know, the middle school, the MSBA has a lot of incentives if you start pursuing green buildings. They did back when the high school was built. That's why there's solar panels on the roof of the high school. That's why it uses gray water for its, for its bathrooms. So it, you know, recycled rainwater to reduce the actual water usage of the building. That hasn't gone away and it's something that we should continue to pursue and really push some of these state incentives for all that we can get out of it.
There's big incentives for all the green stuff. There are other, as you talk, these big projects that are coming on, is there anything coming off or how would you see it from your point of view? Because the taxpayer is on one side saying, "No new taxes."
Yeah.
But the need is still there. How do you kind of go after that? I know it's a tough question.
It's a very tough question. It's something we, we kind of challenge ourselves with every day. But, you know, the, we talked about the high school a couple of times, that debt expires in a couple of years. So I think ideally, the middle school will sequence right at the expiration of the debt. So there would, you know, a building today costs more than a building did 16 years ago. But it would still be, it's a lot easier to swallow that, that slight increase in a new bond as the old one expires than it would be to put another, I don't know, $50 million building on the taxpayers right away. So that ideally, if we, if we get the timing right, it would really minimize the strain on the, on the residents, on the taxpayers. Another project we didn't talk about that we've really been pushing to try to save money on is the sewer force main. So there is a, you know, when the sewer system was installed in Whitman, there is one force main that takes everything to the sewage treatment plant. And there were two breaks in that main in the last couple of years and each one cost a half a million dollars to repair. So we finally brought to town meeting, because a year, year and a half ago, that we need to fix this. The next break could be a million dollars and to replace the whole thing, we're only looking at 13 or 14 million. So we got authorization to bond it. Sewer rates are going to increase to pay for it, but we were able to enter, we were able to get that loan through the state revolving fund and some of the ARPA funds are reducing what we actually are going to owe on the loan. They're going to give us some money back because it's an allowable use of ARPA funds.
Sure.
We've, you know, the bids came in under what we were expecting, so we're going to save some money on that. And there's some, some technical issues that are too, too difficult to get into right now, but the way that we are going to bury the main around the landfill in Brockton are, is going to save us money without exposing the capped landfill. So we are already looking at, and the town can use some ARPA funds too, to just pay off some of that loan. So the way that we are looking at that, I'm hoping that, that the rate increase that everyone is probably getting in the mail right now for, for the sewer bills is going to be the only one that we need for the 20-year duration of this loan.
Okay. We've gone through a half hour just like that. It's amazing how quick and how interesting this has been. And I hope that the viewers have seen it. In, as quickly as you can, because we're running out of time, our cameraman's giving me the signals. Tell the voters, ask the voters of Whitman or tell the voters of Whitman why they should vote for Justin Evans.
I think the easiest, so three years, a lot can change. I'm now the only candidate with experience in the race, which is a crazy thing to say. I'm only 32. But I've had a lot of fun doing this. It's been very challenging. It's been even more rewarding and I'm just not ready to stop doing it. I'm having a blast. So I, I hope the voters appreciate all the work that's gone into it and are willing to send me back for another three years.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, this episode of Bring It On is coming to an end. If you'd like to contact me to be on a Bring It On episode or you have any ideas for a show, my phone number is 617-538-0189, or you can contact me at bobhayes4433@gmail.com. Thank you for watching and we'll be back with Bring It On.